All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. First form of business is Roger, would you stand and raise your right hand? And then repeat it after me. Aye Roger.
Aye. I Roger Theis.
Theis, excuse me, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of planning commission.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the planning commission.
In the city of Breezy Point.
In the city of Breezy Point.
Crow Wing County.
Crow Wing County.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're in.
Nice.
Burn your first strike.
All right, the next order of business is election of officers. We'll seek nominations for chair.
I would like to nominate Joe as the chair.
Are there any other nominations for chair? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Joe, your chair again.
Thank you.
Thank you Carol.
Please note liaison votes are also.
Yeah.
Well.
You're not a voting member.
Uh nominations are open for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Councilor.
Any other nominations? Uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carol, you're vice chair this year.
I guess so.
Congratulations Carol.
You better not be asking.
You'll make a good one.
All right, Joe, clear.
Okay, uh we will, or I will ask for a motion to approve the November tenth, two thousand fifteen minutes.
Solemnly.
Have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of those minutes? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion passed. We will then move to city council liaison report. Councilman.
I have nothing. At this point in time, just like to welcome Roger to the team. And I will defer to our leader to my right.
Uh any questions about anything that was held at the council meeting? Yes.
What was the organizational resolution?
Uh each year we do a resolution, we have to signify the official depository, the official legal paper. We designate, well like your appointment for the next term of planning commission. You know, all the citizen designations and also like council liaisons for various committees and that sort of thing. So it's just kind of a catch-all, it takes care of all our business.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to open forum number one. And I assume since there are no bodies and chairs, that we have no comments. So I will close open forum number one. And move to review of narratives for zoning districts. And Joe, hopefully you will walk us through this.
I've given you a great deal of information. And I don't wanna read it all to you. You know, maybe first of all, I should just accept questions, I know Peggy had a few before the meeting. And then we can go on to the, to the questions at the end of this memo. Also included is a draft copy of the ordinance. And it, you know, we talked to Roger ahead of time, and he said, "It looks kinda redundant." Well, it is kinda redundant, but that's because we're specifying each district individually and setting it up rather than just have the chart as we've used in the past. So are there any questions that, or any things you wanna better understand in the items that are raised in, in the narrative or the discussion, I guess, in the memo?
Um with that earlier question I asked you, and I can address that again if the others wanna know what it is. I have a question too about home business. How, when you're talking about a home business, what are the criteria that differentiated, for example? Why wouldn't a licensed daycare center essentially be a home business?
Well, it would, we're, we're calling that out as a separate district. And I did give you a separate memo on the home occupation that we can talk about later. And if you look at the definition in that piece, which is like the second to last piece in your packet, I've got the use of commercial nature conducted by an occupant of a dwelling entirely within the dwelling or accessory building, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of a dwelling for residential purpose. So basically, they're running some form of business out of their own. And I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, yes, it does. And your examples there were good ones. I guess I just, when I was thinking about the whole business of a licensed daycare center, you know, that is also a home occupation. I realize it's entirely different in the kind of clientele you have, you're not selling anything, you know, except your services, but I, I wondered, is it because it's licensed? Is that?
You know, I can't answer for the past and why it was in the ordinance to begin with. And, you know, as we discussed earlier, it is currently only in estate lots, residential. And it's called out separately. And so I'm not quite sure why the ordinance did that. Being a licensed daycare, it is a different, a little different animal than other situations. But I'm not quite sure how to answer your question.
I guess I would personally like to see daycare be put back in all of the residential districts, except like you said, maybe R four.
Yeah. Well, and that's one of the questions I have, you know, and I think that's a good comment. You know, going into the other issues that I've raised, are there any questions about the discussion? And then we can just go on to the questions, we can cut to the chase. Does that sound like a plan, Joe?
Joe, I have a question about the natural environmental lakes.
Yes.
Uh and hopefully, I'm not just asking this because it's, it's a personal issue for me, because I live on, on one of those lakes. But when I purchased my lot.
Yep.
And we were planning on, on building, you know, I was informed that I, I did have a riparian setback.
Yes.
Okay. And I, I would assume I'm confused, is, is there a difference between what I actually experienced and what we're dealing with here?
I would, I would think so, but I'm not quite sure, I mean, Jerry says yes. But we have different setbacks for various types of lakes. You've got general development, recreational development, and natural environmental lakes. And they all have different setbacks.
Okay.
Pelican Lake is seventy-five feet unless it's sewed, then it's fifty feet. That's recreational development. General development is a hundred-foot setback. And natural environments are, I believe, a hundred and fifty. Some ordinances I've used in the past was two-hundred feet.
Okay.
So I, I don't know what you were dealing with, but that's kinda what I'm thinking.
And I remember that being the setback, but do I recall you saying that that does not apply to those lakes within Deacon's Lodge Golf Course?
Right now, we do not have language within that district.
That district.
Resort Commercial. And I added that in, we can certainly take it out. I'd like you to look at the numbers and that kinda stuff.
That's, that's the answer, because obviously, I don't live within that.
Yeah, when we, when we changed to Resort Commercial for that area, we did not add in setbacks from a natural environmental lake.
Okay.
Even though it's not, even though it's a different district, the, the fact that the, the lake is classified as an environmental lake automatically gets you to a different setback that is, than are on a general development lake.
Okay.
The setbacks that we have in our ordinance from OHWs on, in natural environmental lakes and general development lakes, those are also state guidelines. They're, they're consistent with shoreline, with shoreline regulations that are state mandated. So it's, it's in the ordinance, but it's also a state regulation also.
Okay. I think I understand now.
All right.
And even, even though we didn't have that in the Resort Commercial or on the Deacon's Lodge thing, the, the fact that it's an environmental lake would've, would've kicked that in.
Yeah, there's still kind of a shoreline district within a thousand feet of a lake that you have to abide by.
But your point is, it makes sense that we put that language in.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, well, why don't we cut to the chase, if that's all right, and just go to your questions on page six of that memo? Does the commission want to amend in any way the wetland setback standards? At the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we have thirty and seventy-five, the county only has fifteen. We actually had a party in today that thought we were, a surveyor that thought that was a little excessive. You know, I, it doesn't matter to us, it's just one of those things that I think we ought to talk about and decide what we wanna do.
What did the surveyor think was excessive?
Uh the, the thirty-foot wetland setbacks.
He thought it should be fifteen.
Should've, yeah, consistent with the counties.
Except that if we have new subdivisions requiring seventy-five.
We do. And, you know, if you look at the new subdivisions under our code, and this is a, a topic for another discussion another day, but we have two and a half acre minimums, even if the lot's sewed, going with new subdivisions. And I think that's something we better visit in the future. But I think with the two and a half acres, the seventy-five isn't, doesn't become a problem. But if we're looking at subdivisions with less than two and a half acres, it definitely is a problem.
So is that then what the standard should be, that if it's X number of acres?
I, I don't know, I, should be, you know, you guys are deciding the should. You know, what we're looking at is, is what do you want in, you know, I, I, the thirty and seventy-five can stay, I mean, it's just something that, that was questioned here. We, we granted a variance from the wetbacks setback, and it was something I thought that the commission should at least talk about.
For what is worth a little discussion that we had last time, I recall Larry saying that he felt the thirty was excessive. Obviously, he's not, he's not here tonight.
No.
But I, you know, I wanted to recall that.
I'm surprised by that, knowing what he feels about shoreline.
I'm not hearing.
I'm surprised that, you know, I'm, I'm surprised, and, and it's good that we're gonna have the discussion, you know, whatever, whenever. Because I would've said, knowing his views on shoreline, he probably would've wanted the thirty.
Yes. It's surprising to me also.
Hopefully, I didn't hear it wrong.
No, I think that's what he said.
Thirty feet isn't very far.
I don't think it is either.
No, it's not.
See, the problem is, we keep having these discussions, and, and we're talking about the OHW, the high watermark, and then we're talking about wetlands, and, you know, so we have different standards for the two of them, which is...
Yeah, and a lot of times, you'll have the OHW out here, you'll have fifty feet of wetlands before you get to dry land. And then you've got another fifty or thirty feet of setback from there. Yeah.
And that was one of our issues.
It was.
I could see that, yeah. Them thirties. Case by case, but you can't do it case by case.
No, we gotta have some standards.
I mean, you, we're gonna, I'm gonna put this into a final draft for your consideration. I'm not gonna call a public hearing for next time, you've got another month to think about it, but, but it would be nice to get some direction. And Larry will be at the next meeting, he said he would. At least you can get his input at that point. Leave it for now?
Well, I guess, but personally, rather than lower the thirty, I would say, can we lower the seventy-five?
You can do whatever you want at this point.
I believe you can't do the seventy-five from the OHW, because I believe that is, that is shoreline regulations, state mandated.
No, no, we're talking about the wetlands, Jerry.
I know, but she...
Well, not seventy-five from the OHW, you were talking seventy-five from the wetlands. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was the OHW.
No, it's that thirty, seventy-five, it seems like, you know, such a difference.
The one thing I'm gonna tell you about a new subdivision versus an old subdivision is that under the guidelines that we have in place today, the subdivision ordinance, anything that would come in, in the new subdivision would be designed for the circumstances that are out on, on the site. It isn't just, in the old days, Joe Blow came in with a piece of paper and said, "I've got forty acres that I can get forty-five lots," and he just split it up without any concern for topography, wetlands, in, in that type of situation. Today, we look at wetlands and, and we look at stormwater and managing those type of things. Keeping, recognizing the value in a wetland today that was not recognized back in the sixties and the fifties and the forties, when some of these existing lots were wet. So it's very easy to design a subdivision, especially with the large lot requirement that we do have, for the existing situations and the future.
You know, today, with a storm sewer permit, you cannot directly drain into a wetland. You have to have some kind of a sedimentation basin before it goes into a wetland. So we're protecting them in different ways. I mean, granted, you're gonna have runoff on an individual lot to a wetland if it's abutting a wetland, but it's not gonna be a significant amount.
That's another thing I should tell you folks, that the county today, they have a different standard, which I think is fifteen feet. But if in fact you are going to be building and draining towards that wetland, you have to put in structures that catch all the water off the lot before it goes anyplace. So even though there's a lesser setback, there's a requirement that they also have, that they have to do some, some mitigation to make sure that that wetland is preserved. We don't have any of those type of situat, or we don't have any of those requirements in our ordinance.
But it's a county ordinance?
The, the county's ordinance, yes.
So don't we have to follow that, or we don't?
No, we don't have to follow the county's ordinance. We're just, we get used in the conversation because the standard is, is fifteen here, and you have thirty, why is the difference? Nobody ever brings up the fact that, well, you might have to do some mitigation if in fact you are going to try to drain your property towards the wetland.
But going back to your thirty-foot, do you wanna reduce that? You can do that if that's your choice.
No, I wasn't gonna reduce the thirty, but I was wondering if we should reduce the seventy-five.
No, I meant the seventy-five to thirty, yes.
I, I don't know how other people feel about it, but I was...
I'm maybe speaking out of turn here, but I just saw a plat, I think it was, a few days ago, with some lots over on Schaefer Lake? Is there a, a development that's gonna go in on Schaefer Lake?
We have not seen anything.
No.
Okay.
Does Schaefer have Pelican, Pelican Township on the backside? I can't, if you look behind you Peggy.
Oh, good question.
Part of it, yes.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it could be in the township, and that could be the case, and they don't have to show that to us.
Ah, interesting.
And that would be county rules rather than city rules.
Okay, so, because I, I was just curious, you know, I'm picturing how that was, and, and I, I have no idea if it's been brought to anybody, or it's just being talked about, I have no idea. But I just was curious about it, because I wondered what, being that it's on a natural lake, what kind of setbacks they were gonna be having there. I didn't even think about the fact that it was probably in Pelican Township.
Yeah.
They will, they will have the hundred and fifty foot setbacks also.
Yeah, the structure setbacks will have to be at least a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
From the OHW. All right, so am I hearing thirty, or am I hearing leave it for the time being?
Leave it for the time being.
Okay.
Or are we, are we ready to make some?
I'm fine with settling it at thirty. I, I think fifteen is too little, I have to honestly say that. Seventy-five might be pushing it. Yeah, I, I, what seemed to me thirty is a, sort of a compromise.
Okay.
And I would agree.
All right, I'll go ahead and put it in the draft as thirty, we'll get rid of the seventy-five. You can always reconsider at our next meeting, so.
Yeah, I agree, because fifteen is, it's quite a spread from fifteen to seventy-five. Even fifteen, thirty, it's double.
All right, going on to the natural environmental lake standards, in the R one, R two, and the RC districts, they were not in any of those districts, I've added those in, made some educated guesses about what they should be based on other ordinances and what have you. Also, in the RC district, the only place that would be affected was Deacon's Lodge, and I talked about that earlier, Deacon's Golf Course. I've got it in there, I can take it out, but as long as it's there, I might as well just keep it. But are, are you okay with the numbers that I've, I've given you on, on those issues?
Are we talking just about the, number three, the environmental lakes parameters? Or are you also talking about?
Uh we're under number two, natural environmental lakes. But if you go like to the R one district.
Yeah.
You'll see that I've just put them all in bold, because they're now, so that you can see, and it just highlights them a little bit. I think for the most part, those numbers work, you know, it's just sometimes, you know, you may wanna see something different.
How do you feel, Carol?
I think those numbers are good.
Okay. Roger?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, um moving on to number three, do we need to establish maximum height for the airport, resort commercial, urban reserve, and planning zoning districts? After thinking about it, we, we feel that no change is probably appropriate, not establishing a maximum height. Any burning desire to do that, to, to have a maximum height in any of those districts?
I was probably for here, there wasn't one, when I read through it.
Okay, should I move on?
Yep.
The grading and filling for the Resort Commercial District, in the language I talked about, we found some conflicting languages between the standard and the narratives that were in the ordinance as opposed to the chart. And I, I felt that it would be helpful if we had all the grading and filling standards the same throughout, rather than call out that district as being separate. Is that okay? Is that acceptable for you folks, or do you wanna go to the ten and a hundred that we had previously?
Seems like we should be consistent.
It makes administration a lot easier.
I think it would be wise to be consistent.
Okay. Sure, you can go back to the height.
There might be some merit in having a height standard in the RC or the, the Commercial District. Only because...
We have a height standard in Commercial, it's just not Resort Commercial.
Oh, okay. Then I...
Never mind.
Never mind. I regress. I was only thinking of the airport.
Pass.
What is the height in, in Commercial?
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was, okay.
Okay, number five, the R four district, we allow structures up to two percent of the parcel size, up to five thousand square feet. Is this still an okay standard? In, in the memo, I talked about getting a five thousand square foot building would require five point seven-four acres. I don't think we have anything zoned that way. But it's a question for the future, and are we concerned about that or not? There is, you know, a possibility at some point, you could have a, say, a large apartment or townhouse building and a bunch of garages, and they might approach that standard. But, you know, it's still a lot. Well, you know, I, I don't think it's a problem, but we wanted to at least ask you what your thoughts were.
I was looking, when I was looking through here, the size of accessory structures in a lot of the different zones, I thought was very large.
Yeah, and this is existing code language, and I guess that's something we can talk about if you'd like. We have a lot of requests for even larger accessory structures. Jerry, maybe you wanna talk about that?
Tell us your thoughts.
You know, I think it sounds large, but if you, if you're looking at a large lot, you, you say that maybe you have to five thousand square feet, then that requires a lot of acreage in order to do that. In the residential districts like in R one, I, I just got done with a gentleman who has enough property, has two lots, that he can get a building that's nineteen, nineteen hundred, I believe, nineteen hundred square feet. He's not satisfied with that, he would like a, a three thousand square foot.
So on a nineteen hundred square foot, what's the dimensions?
Forty by fifty is two thousand, so.
Basically about forty by fifty, something, I think it was thirty-eight point forty or something like that. But it was, you know, I mean, everybody's got a different idea of what they, what they need in their toy box.
But of course.
We have some big toys today. The first thing that, that, that shows up is a fifty-foot normal. That requires doors that are fourteen feet high, in order to get, get the building, or get it in. The next thing that shows up is a couple of classic cars. And then there's the...
Folks' personal water tanks.
And then personal water tanks. And all this kinda stuff, and I'd rather have it in my backyard than, than have, going to a storage facility. And I can understand that, and quite frankly, some of these folks have enough financial wherewithal to, to be able to afford that kinda stuff. But there, we get a lot of pressure for big structures. I actually think that the ordinance is fair the way it's written, because the larger the lot, the more accessory structure you can have. And I think it's, you know, two percent of it is the max. I think that's real. It still doesn't approach on the thirty percent maximum coverage, allows for, you know, those type of things, but I think it's fair.
We do have it in there, though, the accessory structures have to, to be the same type of siding and everything as the principal structure.
Color, but not siding.
So they could put up a pole barn, but it had to be the same color?
Yes. Pole barns are allowed. And, and that's what's being built today. It's the, the building of choice. Now, you wouldn't see some of that, something like that adjacent to the, to the lake. But in many cases, that's because there isn't enough room on the lot to do something like that. But, off late, you see a lot of it.
Well, and even a pole barn, if it's, you know, if it's kept up, if it's meeting other restrictions, like not five stories tall, or whatever.
We have a maximum, right, that they can do.
Yeah, exactly, and if it's, if it's meeting those requirements, and, you know, I'm thinking of the one we had a couple months ago, where they deliberately angled it so that it, and then they had two different colors, top and bottom, or two different sizes.
It was, it was matching the house.
Yes, yeah, I mean, they, I think, I think just in terms of property values, people are probably somewhat concerned about making them look okay. And a large structure that looks okay, looks a lot different than a large structure that is a mouse and junkie.
But I think both, whole... But I think both pole barns, or I shouldn't say barns, but pole buildings, constructed buildings, they've come a long way in the last twenty years. I mean, hell, there's churches that are built out of them today. So there, it's not, they don't have the connotation that they're the farm building that they used to be.
But I think I agree with you that the size we have is fair. Is it going to suit everybody or make them happy? Probably not. But life is hard.
Move on?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, driveway setbacks for various districts. We suggested that we might want to see a smaller setback in R one, R two, and R three. What are your preferences?
It would seem reasonable to have a different setback for a smaller lot, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
So I would think to, you know, make for the smaller lots, a smaller setback would make sense.
Sounds reasonable.
Five foot isn't pretty much.
No, it's not.
It is one of the hardest things to accomplish.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it is.
Absolutely.
So making it smaller would make...
Especially in our, with our soils that we have, and the fact that the grass doesn't get, you know, unless there's a sprinkler system, people tend to park on the grass and use whatever they can. What you're really trying to do is keep the neighbors from encroaching on your property more than anything else, or you from encroaching on the neighbor's property. But five feet is pretty standard in a lot of communities.
I would recommend that we change the smaller lots to five.
Do you want all three of those, R one, R two, and R three, to be five feet, or just the R two, R three? The R one is currently fifteen feet.
I'd say just R two and R three.
I would, too.
R ones, yeah, R ones are rather large lots. So leave R one or...
Leave R one.
Leave it? Okay. All right. Going to number seven, commercial district. In the commercial district, we have a permitted use reconstruction, remodeling, or expansion. The expansion would be an expansion of a non-conforming use in a commercial district, which is a house. Do you want to leave that, or do you want to change it? I think it might pose some problems, but it's a very unusual provision.
No, I don't think we should retain it.
You don't think it should be left as is?
As I understand it, it's a non-conforming use, right?
It would be a legal non-conforming use with a house in a residential or in a commercial district. And we're allowing, under state law, it allows reconstruction or remodeling, but it doesn't allow expansion. This provision allows expansion. I'm assuming that this provision was put in in designating some properties commercial, and there were existing homes in that area, and that was a way to mitigate that problem. I don't know how many houses we have in a commercial district, and we really don't have that much commercial area. It's up there by the, where would it be, across from the school and the area by the hockey arena, those areas, at least.
My understanding, it was done specifically when they rezoned some property adjacent to County Road eleven.
Log furniture?
No, I think it's further this way from the log furniture. It's, uh... I actually had a request for an addition on the house, and this gentleman came in carrying the paper. I didn't even know it existed, but he came in and said, "This was done, and I contain the right to expand, like, even though it's not conforming, but there may be any special exception for those properties that were in that neighborhood."
Well, there is some along airport, there's some along terminal. Let's get the next one off, I forget. Red Oak.
So you're thinking we should...
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, okay. You don't have a recommendation?
Not really. You know, like Jerry says, we may create more problems than it's worth.
By not allowing expansion?
Yes.
Can you give an example, Joe, I'm trying to imagine that...
Well, I'm trying to think of a house in those areas. Hangers, do people live in the hangers?
What if you have the hangers? Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I mean, they're on this end, the County Road eleven, and we do have some houses there, but, well, not very many. Hangar houses, those are conditional use permits. There might be some houses on the end of, say, Terminal or Red Oak that would be affected. If they wanted to expand their house, they couldn't do it. They're zoned commercial.
So literally, we're saying to them, "You can increase the size of the house."
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, okay.
But their use, but their use to begin with was non-conforming, so what we're saying is, sure, go ahead and expand it all you want to, and you'll just be more non-conforming than you already are.
Yeah, exactly. Leave it? Don't marry nor not?
A lot of these are like grandfathered in, right?
Yeah, I mean, somebody who's already done it is grandfathered. This would be...
That would make it a legal non-conforming use. And under statutes, they can reconstruct, they can remodel, they can do all that stuff, but enlargement is typically not something that's allowed. If we...
Without a variance.
Without a variance, you know, if we allow this to continue, those houses can expand in size as long as they're houses. If they turn the house into a commercial property, it's not a problem. And there's probably not that many, but I, you know, maybe out by the bank in that area, there's a few houses along County Road eleven that might be affected.
I can't think of any houses along there, other, unless there's one back behind the log, the log furniture place back in there.
There is a house back there.
Yeah, there is. And don't, isn't there one at the log shop, too?
Yeah, they have a house. Who down has a host there?
Yeah, so they would be affected.
The house that's furthest back behind the log shop, though, that's already been residentially zoned, is probably...
Well, isn't...
That's wooded residential.
There's issues back there, isn't there?
It is counterintuitive to allow expansion of a non-conforming.
It is, and that's, I guess that's where I'm coming from, exactly. Good term, it just seems like, whatever.
Under this language, those, even though technically I think they're non-conforming uses, under this language, they're not considered non-conforming. They're considered a conforming use, and the expansion is allowed in those specific areas.
They're considered a conforming use because they're a house in a commercial area?
Yes, and they have this special language that comes with it.
So it's double link, going two directions here. I don't feel strongly about it one way or another. If you think that there's enough people who, I mean, for one house, I don't think we, I don't think we agree to all kinds of changes. If it's something that would be a whole bunch of residences, and I really have no sense of that, I can't...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we leave it the way it is, but I'll come back the next meeting with some kind of numbers and maybe examples, and we'll see if we can come up with better information for you. All right. Private motor vehicle sales is an interim use. How do you guys feel about that?
Well, isn't there a limit to how many they can have a year?
There is, but if they go beyond that, they can request an interim use permit, and that's the question. Do you want to allow them to request an interim use permit?
No.
No.
Okay.
I agree.
I was pretty clear about it. I was going to go that way.
Question in my mind there.
No interim.
Exactly.
All right. There's a house on the south end of town that has a car for sale in it almost constantly.
Is that in town?
So, yeah.
South end of town.
On the right side or left?
Four.
Four, on four? Golf carts.
A lot of golf carts.
That's out of town.
More this way, that unusual kind of stuccoed house.
That's, that may not be now. That's being redone and re-upped and... Yeah, that thing was in, in forfeiture for a long time.
Wonder who had the car and boat first.
A lot of boats.
I don't think that's happening today.
Okay. Yeah, I really haven't.
Yeah, one time, yes, you were absolutely right. There was an absentee property owner there at the time, and he had his kids living in the place, and it was basically an accumulation of a junkyard.
There's a place right up behind the arena also, right on Ranchet. It's the last house on Ranchet before the arena property. And there's, there are six, eight, ten cars in that lot on any given day.
I asked Kevin about it.
Oh, did he ask about it?
Yeah, he asked Kevin about it. He said there's a bunch of kids that live there with, and they all have, like, one or two cars. They're working on them. They're all licensed. It's, there's not much we can do about that.
There, are they renting the property? Is that the deal?
Oh, I think it's a family, and just...
Really?
Yeah, at least that's the impression I got.
But at that intersection?
Just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. Oh, must be a bunch of kids.
Yeah, okay.
Vehicle sales in a public district, currently, it's no more than two per year. We'd like to change that, because we do have forfeited vehicles that we dispose of periodically. I'd like to go ahead and make that change. Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, you're talking about like at City Hall when...
Yeah, or the police department and that kind of stuff, yeah. Licensed residential daycare, this is the question you asked, Peggy. You know, do we want to allow them in all residential districts? And I think, Peggy, you and I talked about maybe not R four, so it would be R one, two, and three. Currently, I think it's just in the state lots residential.
Yeah, you know, I guess, I think a lot of people would object just because you have traffic coming in and out that you wouldn't have otherwise, et cetera, but I also think there are a lot of daycare centers around with so many working mothers. And I don't mean, I don't mean necessarily licensed ones. I think there's a lot of people that just do it in their home.
Sure.
I don't know. I don't have...
Yeah, is there some way to distinguish between, you know, the in-home ones where they take in, you know, four or five? I know the license limits how many they can have versus a daycare where they have to have ten or fifteen kids.
They're not supposed to do that, you know, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's an advantage for them to be licensed, because they get help with meals and other services, and so most people, if they're going to take that many kids in, will get licensed. The lady that down the street that takes care of a neighbor's kids is not going to fall into this category.
No, no. I guess because of the traffic issue, though.
You know, there's minimal traffic that goes with that. I think if you're going to discourage daycare centers, I think you're going to create so much animosity within the community that it's not going to be worth it. I mean, when you start telling a bunch of mothers they can't take their kid to somebody that wants to provide daycare in a market that's, I mean, it's tough to find daycare, especially for little babies. It's tough to find it today. I just think, I think the public's going to jump up and down at you and is going to say, "You're crazy."
So if you have a center for, like, thirty kids, you would have to be in a commercial zone, correct?
But the folks that take care of kids in their houses, they're, they're providing a service that is in great demand right now.
I'm just thinking about it. It's...
You have some places that you really don't want to have.
Well, we haven't, up until now, they've only been in estate lots, so we're talking about expanding it is what we're doing. If we go into R one, two, you know, even just R one and R two, or whatever, it would be expanding it. I think to go into R four is really pushing it than you're talking about.
Look, R four is mostly the type shares and those types of things, so you really wouldn't see that anyway. I think the other thing that happens in, when this ordinance was originally written, I think that was before we had a school in Reasonable Lake, and that was before we, it was more of an older community than it is today. I think the community has changed.
Rastic, quick.
Rastic, okay, thank you. I think there's, again, a need for that type of service.
I agree. I think that's good counsel.
And I think that the point that Joe made, that to change it to A, since there is a state regulation anyway, you know, I don't, I don't know why we'd even need to go through the permitting process if we're comfortable with the state regulations.
I think there's, the county actually, I think, does most of the regulation.
They do most of the work, yeah, but it's true, a state permit.
Yeah, I, I think they're much more qualified to determine whether a household is, to their standards, than what we are. And I don't know that we want to get into licensing and permitting and those type of things. I think we're kind of reinventing the wheel there, and maybe we're in an area that we shouldn't be.
Moving on to eleven, minimum residential structure size. We have a standard that's defined in one fifty-three oh seven four. The language is kind of hard to understand. I did explain it in the memo, so you've got a better handle on what is what in each district. The twenty-six by twenty-six foot minimum is only allowed in estate lots, R three and R four. In urban reserve, we have no minimum requirement. Wooded residential's then, R one and R two would have to meet the other standard of twelve ninety-six or nine seventy-five with a twenty-two by twenty-two foot attached garage. If we're going to put these standards in each district and leave them, I don't see the point in maintaining it as written in one fifty-three oh seventy-four. But part of the question then becomes, is that what you folks want in each of those districts? We have an opportunity to change it, or some other ideas, I guess.
What are we going to do if, now let's forget the term, it was in the paper today, the bad is...
The small house.
Tiny house.
Well, twenty-six by twenty-six is pretty tiny.
That's pretty tiny, but the tiny houses are even smaller than that.
Well, they are, yeah. I guess that's a discussion for another day, but do you want to maintain these standards? The way they're set up, the way they're structured, I guess that's really the question. And then the subsequent question would be, can I take away the language in one fifty-three oh seventy-four since it is so confusing and we're doing it district by district? Does that work?
Okay.
Okay. So, are there any other things that we haven't talked about that we need to consider at this time? We will talk about home occupations here in just a bit. All right, I've got my information from that.
Thank you, Joey, you made us think.
It's been great fun for me, too.
Congratulations.
Sometimes you just kind of read it three times and, "Is that what it says?" All right.
We'll move on to home occupation. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I, uh, we are moving to future land use map.
Future land use chart. I've given you a copy of the future land use chart from the comprehensive plan. And then I've also talked about some areas that I think you might wanna think about changing. You're not under any obligation to change and just because you had set in the future land use ordinance one way doesn't mean you enter, you can't entertain a change in zoning in the future. But it is helpful to have a, a better idea of where we're headed and what we wanna do. So, I have the Edgewater Inn property. We acquired that this, uh, this summer. It is currently zoned commercial. It's kind of hard to see on this map, down at the end there, but, um, in any event, well, it doesn't even look... It's already, it's already changed blue. I'm sorry. Do we want that to be public or do we want that to remain commercial?
I personally would like to see it be public.
Okay.
I would too.
Yeah.
All right.
As far as commercial, what could actually go in there?
It would be a really, really tough lot to develop at this point.
Kind of wetland around, isn't it?
You've got your 30 foot wide land standards, you've got your 35 foot setback from the road. There isn't a whole heck of a lot of property to develop there. Okay.
My hunch is back in the day, they probably brought some fill in there.
The other thing is if we make more...
It's a funny little island, yeah.
If it goes public, um, what are we gonna do? Just kind of city take care of it and it'll be more or less...
It, it, it's gonna be green space for quite a while. Um, this spring, sometime this summer, they plan on tearing out the foundation and the asphalt, uh, bringing in dirt and just seeding it. Um, both the planning commission and the park board has been challenged with what can we do with this? And so, at, at that point, I mean, we've got lots of time to decide, but I, as I said, I think it'd be a real challenge to develop that commercially.
Are we responsible, Joe, for tearing off the parking lot?
Yep, yeah, yeah. Well, we were hoping to get it done this year, but we just ran out of time, so...
Is there any bad soil in there?
Um, we don't really know for sure. I mean, it's, it's wetlands up into the edge. As Carol said, it was probably fill that was all brought in way back when.
It'd be interesting to see what's under that.
Oil? Waste.
Well, there was a gas station there one time. Yeah, the tank has been removed as far as we, we understand. Um, that was done probably 20 years ago. But, you know, aside from that, we don't know what kind of soils we have to work with. Um, City Hall campus property. We bought, uh, 10 lots back in here. We're adding to, um, the lots we have in the campus area. They're bounded by Spruce Street and North Spruce and, oh crap, I forget the other street, but it's the first street that comes out over here. We have only, I believe, five lots left over here to acquire and there's maybe two back here to acquire. And then the, this whole two, three block area will be owned by the public. Do we wanna just continue to make that change to public?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wastewater treatment property. We, we acquired two properties, um, at the end of, oh gosh, Perk, no, it's, um, Delaware Trail. Delaware Trail is, um, it's basically a minimum maintenance road. It's down at the bottom here. It's kind of hard to see. But there's a couple of lots that are about the wastewater treatment plant. The furthest most subdivision, kind of in the middle of the blue areas, we acquired the two middle lots. It's four acres. We'd like to go ahead, or I think it should be a good idea to go ahead and zone that public. And then if you go to the left of that area, there is also, um, a few lots that we own along Percheron Court, which is that cul-de-sac that ends at the blue area. Does that make sense? I know it's kind of hard to talk about this. We'd like to go ahead and make those changes, uh, to, to public as well.
Yep.
And we're just talking about future land use at this point. We're not talking about rezoning and we can do that later, so, uh, we'll do that as well. Okay, and then, um, Arnold Palmer Drive, Drive and, um, Palmer Court. Uh, at our last meeting, we had recommended the, the change in zoning for the three lots that were not part of Deacon's Lodge originally, but were planted in that subdivision. The remaining area remains R2. Do we wanna go ahead and change that to, um, to resort commercial? I mean, that's basically its use.
Yep.
Okay. And, let's see. And then finally, the property adjacent to the stable, um, we had that application. They withdrew their application, but I think it still makes sense to change that to commercial. What's your thoughts? Future land use.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rapidly.
All right, that was easy. Any other questions or any other areas that you think that we might wanna consider? This is the last piece, by the way, of the comprehensive plan, so hopefully we'll get that, get a draft to you and get it out to all... I mean, I've said, been saying that for months and we keep finding things, but now we're done. So, we'll get that to you at the next meeting for your review and we'll also get it out to the, uh, buddy jurisdictions. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I have one question, which is a little off the subject, but we had the big discussion about the, um, the pods.
Yes.
And allowing them. Do we have any ordinances against someone just parking a, a semi trailer in their driveway?
No.
Should we?
Um, some cities do. I, I, it's, it's a difficult thing to deal with. I don't know, um, I don't know what to tell you. I guess it's up to you guys.
Carol, are you talking about an over-the-road trucker that may park there overnight or...
No.
The house dog?
Well, that one's a whole nother issue.
That's not an over-the-road trucker.
What is ever gonna happen there?
They have, to get their final certificate of occupancy, um, that's gotta be removed. And, um, we've had issues with that homeowner because of sewer backup.
Yeah.
So, we haven't wanted to push the button. Um, we will push the button eventually, but it's just kind of like pick your battles.
Yeah.
You know?
Cause they really are abusing.
It's kind of a billboard, isn't it?
Yeah, maybe.
It's a nice one.
It's a nice one. I'll give you that. But is that what you're talking about or are you talking about other things?
Well, it's down on four on the...
That's the one, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It doesn't have a cab attached to it.
No.
Yeah.
And 18 wheels.
No. All right, home occupations?
Home occupations.
Okay, we started this discussion and, um, I guess there's a couple of questions here for you. The, the easiest question, I guess, is there currently exists a bunch of conditional use requirements in the section under home occupation 153093. The, um, the chart had called it an interim use and so, we need to make it one way or the other. I think an interim use makes more sense. The ordinances I've worked with in the past have made them conditional uses, but, um, interim uses are fairly new in the scheme of land use regulations and so, maybe that was the case. They were just, you know, the old language. I have no problem with interim use because you can set a timeline. And so, I think that's the appropriate way to go, um, is that okay to go ahead and make those changes? I can add this into the other ordinance as well. Okay, the second question is, are the, um, uses that I talked about, are they acceptable? You know, it's just kind of like, we always get these weird questions and it, you know, we believe that's how we would interpret them, but we wanna know if that's how you interpret them. Do you have any comments, too?
Listing uses is very difficult because the, the, just people's lifestyles and, and there, the internet is changing and there's more folks working out of their houses. They're trying to list what those, those occupations are. It would be very difficult. The changes that happen, uh, just almost instantly and continually make that very difficult.
And it, and it seems like that is going to, is an issue for us and is going to continue to be an issue because people who would love to be up here are finding ways to work up here.
So, what, what you would do then is, for all of them, it would be an interim use permit and you'd put restrictions through the interim use permit?
It's just like a conditional use permit.
Right.
The only difference between a conditional use and an interim use is an interim has a period, time period. Time period definite. It can be one year, it can be five years, whatever you think's appropriate and it's not recorded as a deed restriction on the property. Where a conditional use permit is a deed restriction, it's permanent unless taken away.
And does an interim use permit require some kind of a fee?
Requires the same fee as a conditional use permit, $250. Requires the public hearing the same process that the conditional use permit would go through.
So, we wouldn't want to make the time element too restrictive, like every year. That'd be 250 bucks a year then, they'd have to do.
Yeah, I mean, typically there are three to five years is what I've seen.
So, like an auto mechanic, if I understand?
Yeah, or a, a insurance salesman who runs it out of his home or...
Well, that would be a little different than an auto mechanic.
Beauty shop.
A beauty shop, but an auto, say a guy's fixing cars, you don't want that.
Well, I don't know if you'd wanna allow that in a residential district because of noise and dust and those kinds of things, but that's, you know, he would have the opportunity to come before you board and you could either set conditions or deny it, you know?
Or if he had, if he was, it was all, you know, enclosed within a building, that would be different than if he was doing it outside in his driveway. I mean, there's all kinds of...
You can't be covered.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, they'd want fumes and all that kind of stuff in a residential neighborhood, but...
If you're changing them all to interim use and you're thinking there's gonna be a fair number of them, um, is 250 maybe high? I don't know. I, I don't have anything to compare it with.
We, we look at what does it cost us to send out notices and deal with the time work and, and that's about what it takes.
If, if somebody is serious about doing it and wants to be legitimate about doing it, that $250 is not going to be a hidden student. The application.
Yeah.
It's the Flyby Act that will have an issue with the... If you really wanna have it, probably.
Yeah, okay.
Where this thing really isn't a business, it's something else. It may look more like a hobby or something.
Sure.
The other thing I, I need to tell you is that there's a lot of them that are pre-existing, that are out there, that don't have interim use permits. I don't know that it's our intention to go out there and knock on everybody's door and say, "Hey, are you selling insurance here? You need a permit." I don't think that's who we are. I, I think the, the example that we had a while back when these folks were moving into this house and, and trying to establish their salsa business. It was legitimate. They were upfront about it. Uh, you know, they've got some conditions and they've got a time limit if they're successful. Hopefully, they move on to someplace downtown or, you know, to...
Expand.
Or run a, run a, run a, run a non-performing commercial houses.
Or...
Regal, exactly.
That's the one thing about zoning, just because you zone something, some, something, doesn't mean that it will always happen. This is what you'd like to see happen to it, but, you know, in today's world, it doesn't always happen.
I will tell you, just for your information, now, here's a lawn does require a state permit. They require the city to sign off, is it the appropriate zoning for its location? So, if, if those folks located in residential districts, we will know about it and they will make application. All right.
Think if somebody's making food in that house, the Department of Health would be involved.
At some point, yeah. I mean, it can go on for a while. People make jam and go to, go to, um...
Yeah.
You know, whatever, sales and stuff and they can get away with it for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Quite frankly, you won't get the benefits of that.
Yeah.
And expand.
Pay taxes.
Is that, is that true?
Sure. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Just, that's just an FYI. We did have a gentleman that was very persistent. I take that big flight when I say that.
We kind of got that.
Who became a country lawyer over the phone and, and decided he wanted to buy a tax exempt lot that are very... And didn't like the information that we were giving them about the fact that the lot was unbuildable. It was on an unimproved road. Uh, wood didn't have an adequate size, didn't have sewer, um, and we did not allow camping. And he made issue with it and rather than labor the, the, the argument, we asked for a, could, thinking that he's going to be back in the summer and he's gonna put a camper on this lot.
They will.
If he could get to it. And then we'll issue a ticket. Uh, we thought we could be proactive there. An attorney's opinion that whether our interpretation of the ordinance was exactly right or, or not. And then you have a copy of the opinion. Uh, the attorney concurs with, with what staff was telling this gentleman. We have also forwarded this opinion to him.
And if he camps, then we, first people is out there and issues a ticket?
We've already told him that.
Yeah.
And, and that's a fine, I assume?
Yes.
Of?
It's a misdemeanor.
What's the fine?
Depends upon the judge.
Up to the courts.
Guilty.
It is, it is what it is. We're, we were just trying to be a little proactive, you know, rather than get into an argument after the fact.
That was smart to do that, cause he's gonna be, if he's been this persistent, he'll continue to be.
He'll do it.
Has he actually bought the lot too?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. He was forewarned before he bought it. Um, just as a side note to that, if you look at any of these, um, district-specific areas, I have prohibited or excluded uses in addition to the following shown, uses not listed as allowed, permitted, conditional, or interim are prohibited. So, it'll strengthen the ordinance in that regard.
Quite frankly, I am surprised that this hasn't been an issue before in small lots and...
It's, it's going, it's going to be again.
Yeah, I mean, two years ago, we put up no camping signs on vacant lots. That has helped dramatically.
Yeah.
Um, but we still see it periodically.
I do think, though, that sometime down the line, if, if that we continue to have all these areas of tax exempt or tax forfeit lots, small lots, unimproved roads, that maybe, maybe there should be a discussion about whether some limited camping in those areas maybe gets those things out of the market, uh, gets them back into paying taxes and, and makes them buildable in some time in the future. And I'm not advocating that, but I'm just saying that I think that you're probably gonna get asked to do that. To have that discussion.
You would have to really nail that to the wall. The restrictions to that, I can envision, I don't, I don't even wanna tell you about them.
I'm with you.
The rules. No. I don't even wanna go there myself, but I have no say.
Well, and, I mean, pure and simply, I think of the area of Delwood because that's what I'm most familiar with. And there's a lot of small lots there and I, I sympathize wholeheartedly with the people who bought them and misunderstood for whatever reason, but the fact of the matter is, you, you can't build on those little lots and have, not have sewer and water issues. So, maybe that's the long haul issue, is that we'd have to sewer and water or at least sewer that area. And that would be a huge expense.
Yeah, and that's been talked for, for the, from the last 25 years, I, way as far back as I can remember.
Just a side note on tax forfeited lots, um, the mayor had an opportunity to talk to the, the county about tax forfeited lots. There's 1,200 in the county. 500 of them are in Breezy Point.
Wow.
Wow.
Five hundred?
Almost half.
Jerry, don't you think that that's the inevitable future for those lots? That people will understand there's no use for this thing and, and they just stop paying taxes on it?
I, in some cases, that's, that's what's happening now.
No, I'm sure it is.
Sure.
You know, a lot of cases, in, in, in most cases, there is... You know, a lot of cases, in, in, in most cases, those lots were originally bought years ago, some of them sight unseen, some of them because they got a radio and a, and a song and dance.
Free TV.
Free TV or whatever it was.
Exactly.
And some of them were sold several times.
Yeah, and they, they, you know, thought at one time that maybe they moved and put a camper on it or, or something like that, which was allowed years ago. And then got away from that and they, they just let them sit, they kept on paying taxes. In a lot of cases, the second generation inherits those, what can we do with them? Well, we can't do anything with them, so they quit.
Is, is there anything we can do proactively with those tax forfeited parcels?
Tom Lilhi and I talked about getting, sitting down with probably you and the county and seeing if we can't find a way to consolidate lots, to make them buildable, make them more economical. The county wants market rate for these lots, which doesn't make it easy to sell. And, you know, like, I mean, Tom's idea was, well, okay, you can sell them for market rate, the next year, maybe a discount of five or 10 percent. Following year, you discount them another five or 10 percent.
Put some incentive in.
Put some incentive into the fact that we can get these back on the tax.
Well, it just makes sense.
You know, and so at some point, we're going to have that conversation. I mean, in the past, they did give them away for more reasonable prices, but the county has taken a different tack and said, we need market rate for this to protect property value.
I'd love to, to have that meeting. I just hate those, those signs just don't look good.
Let's not walk them around.
All right. That's all we have. Well, you want to do the second open forum?
No, 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 no. Mr. Chair, could I have?
Yes, sir.
A, a couple of minutes in the other?
Yep.
K. I, my apologies for the chair and the commission. I was remiss in my denoting on, on the mayor and council reports, item number five, in your packet, especially the Fletcher Foundation's donation of ten thousand dollars again to the cemetery commission, God bless them. I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the fifth donation in a row, I believe so, yeah, of ten thousand dollars, which is sorely needed by the cemetery and a real blessing, I might add. Secondly, number three there, the, the Breezy Point Airport celebration, the mayor at that meeting on the fourth made a specific note of that, acknowledging the receipt of the money. And secondly, his enthusiasm, if you will, for that fly-in airport celebration again for two thousand and sixteen. Last note there would be the appointment of the mayor, of myself and Diane Williams to serve as liaison to the commission and the airport commission and help with the coordination on the city's part to get the city more involved in that. And this, this is a wonderful thing. I, I just can't beat that banner enough. Last year was the first time, Roger, for your information, that was held and it was a smashing success.
That was there.
Yeah, oh, good. It was just a wonderful, and this year will be even better.
Have they chosen a date yet, do you know?
No, he has not yet. And it was way, 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 way too early last year, but it just coincided with Neil Nervison's freebie for all his patrons, which was another wonder and he'll be doing similar again this year. But it was too early and the weather can be so bad for a fly-in that early in the year. So Cliff is, is striving and I'm, I keep pushing him to get that date selected because it's important, we need to, but there's a lot of coordination with that. It is just, and, and they're all over the state. I mean, fifty different airports hold these during the year and it's a huge, huge deal, really showcasing the city, you know? It got me on the bandwagon. Thank you.
But could you get the, the resort involved a little more?
Yes, yes, they're going to, they're going to be, yes. And, and that's all part of the, yeah, this is just a work in progress.
All those players need a place to stay when they.
Sure.
If they stay overnight, yeah.
Sure, I'm going to, we're, we're going to attempt to get some discounted rooms for them and blah, 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 yeah.
They can camp on all of those tax. Solve the problem.
One weekend.
Bring your tent. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Anything else under other? Joe, Jerry, anything under other? I will open, open forum number two and I assume I can also close open forum.
Hand up sort of wood.
Jeff Johnson out of town.
Yeah. You're going to have to ask Jeff if he has anything to say. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Good. Congratulations. You'll make a wonderful, you will.
Yes.
Could I ask his vice?
I feel like I can.
Relax a little?
I can go for it.
Take a couple of meetings off?
What this cemetery needs to do is, what are they going to do at the same time?
Landscaping gets, gets tied there to be, to be fine, the ground, it always has. They were very Fletcher Commission.
They don't want anybody that's going to be gone every other.
When we built it, or we're building it, which.